All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and we will call the meeting to order. For roll call, we have myself, Nicole Kent, and then we have Brian Schmidt. We have Sunny Spencer, Scott Reisenhower, Devin Craig, and Superintendent Dr. Paula Dawson. If everyone will please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Next item is approval of the agenda. There were a couple adjustments and resignation was removed from the personal recommendations. And Policy 6220 had a revision regarding the cost analysis acquisition threshold on item 2D. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
I move to approve the agenda.
You?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is one of our favorite items, celebrating some of the district's most amazing students at each school.
Avery Sykes, if you'll come stand next to me, please.
Avery was nominated this month because she is an all-around great role model, both in academics and character. Avery pushes herself to go above and beyond in all areas at school. She often carries offers to help her teacher and classmates and extends her creativity to do more than expected. She also is involved in sports and activities outside of school. Avery makes teaching and learning fun and is a great example of growth mindset and being engaged, being an engaged learner. Keep up the great work, Avery.
Okay, Avery. Congratulations. And then Ms. Kent will give you your award and also the little script.
Congratulations.
Tommy, will you come up here, please? Thank you. You can stand right there so everyone can still see you too. Thank you.
Tommy is a great leader and an example for his first grade classmates. He is an active listener and quickly follows directions. Tommy puts forth his best effort and does exemplary work on every project or an assignment. Tommy is always looking for ways to help others and show kindness. He is an inquisitive learner and fully participates in discussions and adds his knowledge and insights. Tommy says that the best thing about school is getting to learn new things, and he especially loves learning about science. His friends say that they like Tommy because he is so nice and fun to play with. Tommy is a wonderful student, learner, and friend, and we are proud to have him as our Lake Tap Student of the Month. Congratulations, Tommy.
Good job, Tommy. Congratulations. Right, Ms. Kent will give you your sort of.
All right, Madison McGinnis. We are excited to recognize Madison McGinnis at North Taps Middle School, as North Taps Middle School Student of the Month. Madison is remarkably kind and caring student whose positive attitude shines every day. She consistently goes out of her way to make others feel welcome, whether in the classroom, the hallways, or at lunch. Whenever we have a new student join her class or is at lunch, Madison is always the first to greet them, start a conversation, and ensure they feel included and supported. Her natural empathy and willingness to look out for others sets a wonderful, powerful example of her, for her peers. Madison also works incredibly hard academically, approaching her learning with focus and responsibility. She is truly one of the kindest and most thoughtful students to come through North Taps Middle School. That says a lot. And her presence makes our school a better, more supportive place for everyone. Madison embodies the Bulldog Way in every interaction, and we are proud to celebrate her this month.
Thank you. Congratulations. That was some really kind things.
Congratulations. That's awesome. All right, and then if families want to take a moment to take a picture with your teacher that nominated you or your principal, please take time to do so. Okay, stick around. Well, she's not here. Her team is not here.
Her principal's here. But her principal's here.
Thank you.
Of course.
One, there you go. All right. One, two, three.
I mean, it is a tradition. Awesome. And did Tommy want to have a picture? Tommy and Mr. Cordell. And your family.
Next, next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. We have minutes from October 27th meeting, personnel recommendations, payroll vouchers, and an updated policy 6220. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. You said that there was a change in the personnel recommendations?
Yes.
What was that? From Friday to now, like today?
Yes, there was a custodian. Yeah, there were two and now there's one.
Thank you. That's one question I had.
That matter got cleared up, so it is good to be going now.
All right. Are there any other questions, discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That's right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we are really excited to welcome our student, our school board student representatives. We have, we'll have Ella speak first. Thank you. It should be on. Yes, great.
Hey, um, I'm gonna talk about the, um, uh, holiday market at NTMS. It's on December 4th, and I think the time is from 6:00 to 8:00. And a haunted hallway's report, I talked about it last time. Uh, we raised around $3,600 from it, so it was really successful. It was, we did really good. And I think the last topic I'm talking about is we have an all-star trip on the 25th, so tomorrow. We're going to the Family Fun Center. We do that, it's like a quarterly thing if you have good grades and, yeah. It's fun.
All right, we'll have Safari next.
Hello. Okay, so I'm gonna be talking about our holiday sing-along at NTMS, and it's on December 19th, I think. And so we're doing a holiday sing-along with the whole school. We also have a band and choir concert, as well as, I think, holiday pep assembly. Okay, and I'm also gonna read my veterans' day essay, so. Um, our prompt is why the lives of America's homeless veterans should be important to us all. A veteran is someone who wants to do the military, putting their own safety and comfort aside to defend our country and protect our freedom. They stand for courage, discipline, and sacrifice. Holidays have built the foundation of America. The lives of our homeless veterans should matter to everyone because they once risked everything for us, yet many face the harsh reality of having no home, no hope, and no hope. Their struggles remind us that freedom comes with responsibility, the responsibility, the responsibility to care for those who protected it. Having a mom who works as a mental health doctor has helped me understand this issue on a much deeper level. I've seen her dedicate herself to supporting people who struggle with PTSD, anxiety, and depression, many of them veterans. She showed me that trauma doesn't fade when the fight stops. It falls people into their everyday lives. And when those wounds go untreated, they can take away from someone's sense of purpose and stability. Because of her, I've learned that homelessness isn't just about losing a home. It's about losing healing, compassion, and understanding. Some people argue that all homeless people deserve equal attention, and that focusing on veterans alone leaves others behind. That's true. Every person without a home deserves compassion, but veterans carry an extra burden for our country and that deserves special care. We should all care because these veterans carry the weight of our nation's safety and now it's our turn to carry them. Supporting shelters, counseling, and job programs gives them the chance to rebuild their dignity and futures, showing that helping homeless veterans isn't charity. It's gratitude, justice, and a promise that no hero will ever be forgotten.
I wanted to mention that Safari was one of three chosen to actually do the readings at our other assemblies. So many did turn in their essays, and Safari got to be one of them that was chosen. So thank you for that, and it was beautiful. Thank you for sharing it with us this evening. Kim?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kim, and I'm gonna be talking about a few things that are going to be happening in December. First things first, we have our PTA Santa's Workshop at Derringer Heights Elementary School. It's on Saturday, December 6th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There's gonna be things going on like arts and crafts, gift giving, and just like holiday fun, you know? Um, we also have on December 19th another holiday sing-along, but instead of it being at the middle school in North Taps, it's gonna be at Lake Taps Elementary from 11:00 AM to 10:00 AM, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, sorry. Um, it's gonna be an assembly, a sing-along, and, um, I think that's all we have for December.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming this evening and for sharing your updates with us, and you are free to leave if you'd like. All right, next we have reports, student, student superintendent's report and operations reports.
All right. It has been a busy time, and yet it's been a short time since we had our October meeting, so you will see that I am, kind of previewing some of the things that maybe some of our student reps even talked about today. So in Derringer, our mission statement is that we're educating every child for confidence today and contribution tomorrow. And our vision statement is that we are a school district who will provide all students with appropriate high-quality programs in a safe, challenging, and inclusive school environment. This will be undertaken with respect for and in partnership with families and the community. So as you know, this year our theme is Kind, Curious, Capable. And every month I select a different quote, and I thought this was a very fitting quote. "If I have the belief that I can do it, I shall surely acquire the capacity to do it, even if I may not have it at the beginning." So we've been talking a lot with our students about a growth mindset, how we might not know and have everything we need to complete a task at the beginning, but if we keep working at it and growing, then certainly we'll be able to do our best to accomplish it. Derringer is a really wonderful place, and we have a great story to tell. We've been talking about that for quite some time, and we are a community united in educational excellence. And just wanna remind us that while there are many things going on in the world, in our nation, even in our community, in Derringer, we really are focused on a high-quality education for all of our kids. So we have some things happening around our district. As we just heard, one of the Veterans' Day speakers here, you can see that we had Veterans' Day assemblies in all three of our schools, and they were outstanding. If you had an opportunity to attend, you heard really quality music at all three of the schools. You heard the speeches given, and just a beautiful honoring opportunity for our students and families to recognize our veterans. This month I was able to help judge the PTA Reflections Contest. So our PTA offers an opportunity for students to do art, and it can be visual art, it can be dance, it can be music, or it can even be a poem or a piece of writing about the theme "I Belong." And it really is an opportunity for students to express themselves about this theme, and so myself and several other PTA volunteers and parents were able to judge those. I don't know the outcome of that judging. I just know what I put on my page. And then all of those are assembled, and then those that are scored in the top are moved on to the state PTA Reflections. And of those, if any of them are selected, they go to national. And so on June 22nd, I'm asking you to put it on your calendar now because there will be a wonderful awards assembly where those students are recognized for their reflections art within the district, and then we would know if any of them went on to state. I'm sorry, I meant January, it's right. My brain just kinda looked at that six there, but it is January indeed. Indeed. All right. I know you all know this, but for those who are here or listening at home, we just had an opportunity to have a wonderful conference for the Washington State School Directors Association for our school board. Unfortunately, Sunny was not able to be there, but the rest of us were there, listening to really powerful messages about what it means to be directors of a, of a school district and to learn together. It was really a great time, and I appreciate that our school is always learning. Our district, our administrators learn, our teachers are involved with professional development, our paraeducators, and it's fitting that our school board would be learners as well. I would like to give a shout out to our transportation team and specifically Julie Falcetta. Julie is the coordinator of our transportation department, and I've just highlighted a few of the things that in the last month might have come up. For example, we have had multiple bus drivers who have had to be out due to injury, illness, or some family needs. We've had some losses in families in our bus drivers, and so we've really been short. But I will tell you, Julie just took the bull by the horns, and she just got to it and found sub-coverage. There were some days that we needed to merge some routes. We've been contracted with First Student, who has provided some sub-coverage for us, and we've just really appreciated her willingness and interest in being a problem solver. Also, several of our buses have needed mechanical attention. Even our McKinney Vanto van, where we pick up individual students, needed some mechanical attention. We've used a service called Hop Skip Drive. We even cleaned out our shop truck and literally picked up students in the truck that we have, because we really find value in our students being here all day, every day, and on time. And so I will say Julie has just really gone above and beyond to make that happen. I just really want to share my appreciation publicly for her. I also want to share with you, you know that one of my goals is for us to just elevate our special education programming in Derringer. We have excellent educators. We've got good programs going on, but we can always learn more and get better. So you can see here, I've shared this with our special education leadership team, that we're providing professional development and learning for teachers, paraeducators, and administrators to strengthen their instruction, compliance, and practice. Our principals are really tasked with going to a lot of meetings. They are the representatives. They're called LEA reps, and they're the, the local education authority, really, saying, yes, we approve of this IEP, and we are going to make sure it happens. But it's really impossible for our principals to go to every single meeting, and so we've been working on a video. And so we are going to be able to train some more people in our district to be those LEA reps, to try to offer some relief to our principals, and also to broaden the practice that we have. Um, we are working on creating a standard operation procedure handbook, and we will be looking at, currently, we have two, we call them fractional directors for special education. They're not here full-time. And really looking at what would it mean for us to have a high-quality program with a leader who really knows a lot about inclusive practices, a leader who really can take us to that next level? And then also creating opportunities for parent feedback in the, in the byway of some surveys, but maybe even a special education parent forum, or even a group that meets regularly so that we can receive feedback about what is going well, what should we continue, and where are those places that we can get even better? So I'm just really excited about the work that's happening on behalf of special education, and I appreciate all of our staff who are working behind the scenes to make these things happen. Um, as the students said, there is a holiday market Thursday, December 4th at North Taps. And if you were not able to attend last year, I really encourage you to go. There are high-quality vendors. I did some of my Christmas shopping there, and there are student vendors, students who make beads and soap and different kinds of gifts, and it's just really a treat. So really encourage our community to attend that. Also, our PTA is having a holiday workshop. This is for families with kids. Uh, the Cougar Chorus will be singing, and it's just really a fun night, or fun morning, it's a Saturday morning, to make crafts and gifts and those kind of things and really get in the holiday spirit. I do know that they're asking for people to pre-register so they know how many craft packages to purchase. So if you're interested, reach out to your school's PTA. Uh, you can see we have a lot of things coming up in the community. This week on Wednesday, we have an early release for all three schools at your early release time for Thanksgiving break, and then the 27th, of course, is Thanksgiving. And the 28th, we recognize our Native American Heritage Day as well. Uh, we have the Cougar Chorus singing at Taps Island Tree Lighting on December 5th. And you can see here on the 11th, we have winter concerts at North Taps, but at 5:30, it's the elementary choir and the elementary music program with band, and then at 7:30, it's the middle school programming. On December 13th, we are hosting a very large regional robotics event. And that event is bringing in, I think, 28 teams who are primarily high school, but some middle school from around the region. And, um, our, our system is getting ready for an event that happens from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the evening. And, uh, North Taps Robotics has really been shining bright. Uh, I think their last performance, they took second place, and that was only to a high school team. So we're really excited about the work that's happening in Derringer with robotics. And then you can see our next school board meeting is the 15th, and then, um, as our students said, we have some sing-alongs and holiday, holiday sweater fun on the day before our winter break, which is December 22nd through January 2nd of 2026, and we return to school on January 2nd. I do want to give another shout out to the Derringer Education Foundation. I drove by. Actually, I was at, uh, North Taps Middle School today, and the new reader board sign has been put up. Now we're working on some electrical components and things, but hopefully that will get resolved very quickly so that we can start using that really beautiful sign, and that is just such a gift to our school district from the Education Foundation. They are having their raise smore for Derringer on January 10th, and I understand that over half the tickets have already been sold, so, uh, people who want tickets probably should get them sooner than later. All right, do you have any questions for me about my superintendent report?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Going back to the transportation, looks like there was a lot of stuff going on. Have, have these been corrected? Are the buses up and running?
They are getting corrected. We are having some vendors come up and fix buses. We've had to take a couple down to a couple other places to get fixed, but it is, for some of them, it's just the age and the wear and tear of our buses, and, um, yes, so those things are getting taken care of. Currently, we do have a part-time mechanic because our full-time mechanic is out on medical leave, so that may be contributing to part of the reason for so many things happening all at once. Yeah. All right, regarding operations, um, regarding the portable, I feel like I'm just a broken record. We are waiting for electrical, and we're waiting for more electrical, but hopefully that will be in place pretty soon, so that portable can be up and going. Um, you heard about the reader board at North Taps. As you drive by, I'm, uh, it'll be very fun and exciting to see it all lit up. Uh, the turf field at North Taps, we're just waiting for some contract language, and I did want to let you know that we did have to have some roof repairs done here at Lake Taps Elementary. I know we've heard about our condition assessment, that this roof is, is really in need of replacement, and we'll talk about the levy later, but in the meantime, we did have to have some roof repairs done just recently. So, again, we are a community united in educational excellence and just, uh, great things happening here within the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next item on the agenda is an information item. Executive Director of Business Services Laura Marco will present findings from a recent water report provided to the district.
Good evening, board members. Go to the next slide. For some background, we are required to have our drinking water outlets in all of our schools tested by June 30th, 2026. And if we do it by then, the Department of Health was going to paper all of that for us, so we jumped on and got on that list. And, um, the Department of Health came out on October 8th, 9th, and 10th. They did one school each day. And when we say they just tested our drinking water outlets, these are the type of outlets they would test, like our drinking fountains, bottle fillers, anything in our kitchens, culinary classrooms, teachers lounge, in, in, in place or fixture where it would be expected that somebody may drink the water. Um, things that they did test are things like, uh, science classroom sinks, outdoor spigots, the eye wash stations, places that you would expect you wouldn't drink the water, so, um, so their, their testing was limited to just those areas. On Friday, November 21st, we received our first test results. Sorry, that is, uh, I should back that up. That was on November 14th, we received our first test results. Sorry, that was the wrong date. And we only received the results for Lake Taps Elementary and North Taps Middle School. Uh, at Lake Taps, they tested a total of 76 fixtures, and at North Taps, they tested 51. The reason, like, North Taps is a larger school, but the reason there's more fixtures at, or at, uh, Lake Taps is because there's, um, a drinking fountain at every sink in the classrooms, so just have a lot more fixtures, um, just because of the number of, of bubblers. The thresholds for, that they're testing for is anything below five parts per billion or less is considered okay. Anything through, from, uh, between six parts per billion to 15 parts per billion, um, we would need to come up with an action plan for. We still have to mitigate that. And then anything at, by 15 parts per billion and above, we had to immediately shut off. So at Lake Taps, there was, um, fif- So at Lake Taps, there was fifteen, the majority of them tested below five, five parts per billion. We had twenty one fixtures that tested in that middle threshold and then five that tested above. And that could be anywhere from, you know, sixteen parts per billion, which we did have a couple at sixteen, seventeen, twenty and above. And at North Taps, again, the majority of them tested below, we had ten in that middle range. And then eleven that were above the fifteen parts per billion threshold. And just as a, as a note, every school district in the state is going through this process as well with the, with the new mandate. And given the age of our buildings, especially when we're going to talk about this with our upcoming levy. Some of this is not surprising at all, given the age of our buildings and the age of our fixtures. And obviously our priority is always will be the safety of our students and staff. So with that, we took immediate action. Our maintenance staff stayed late on the fourteenth, the same day we got our results. Tallyed up all of the fixtures and the types of fixtures that we needed, went and bought them over the weekend, worked over the weekend. And then the whole following week to mitigate and change out all of those fixtures. Where we could, we're just making up interpractice to cap off drinking fountains. They're gross. Really possibly be drinking out of, especially post-COVID, drinking out of, you know, putting their mouth on drinking fountain. So that has been more of a practice in our schools anyway. They're using the bottle, bottle filler stations, they're not using the bubbler. So some of that elevated lead testing could also be because a lot of those fixtures just aren't being used. So water sits in there and collects over time. They, so forty seven total tap fixtures and water and our water lines were replaced. We went and posted for hand washing only on classroom sinks. Even though some of those tested below and probably could be used for drinking water. It's really just best practice for them to use model filling stations and designated water areas. So all of the work was completed within one week of the time we received that, the notification for those two schools. So we have contacted the Department of Health to come back and retest all of those forty seven fixtures that tested above five parts per billion. We haven't heard back about that process and as or how long it may take them to come out and test those. But the ones that we had to cap off because they were above. We, even though we have done some mitigation, we can't use those like in our, one of our classrooms. We aren't able to use those sinks until they do retest. So we're hoping that will be sooner rather than later. Some additional future mitigation that we have planned is. Lake Taps here is the only school that doesn't have official model filling stations. So we are working with the company, we signed a contract for them to come in and. Replace two of our drinking fountains, the, the main ones that are in the hallways with the bottle filling station. So the school will have those as well. Previously, they were paid for by generous donation from the PTA at the other schools. But we're going to be paying for that out of the capital projects fund so that they have that available to them. And those all have filters in them. So it's just much, much better for using for water throughout the day. And then on the next slide, this is just a awesome picture that Ryan and Scott took of. The collection of all of the, the work that they did again, within a long week time span. And our next steps is we have to develop a formal action plan in consultation with the Department of Health. Within six months, it's not going to take us six months to do that. We've already mitigated a lot of the, one of, all of the ones that we know of. But that action plan will need to include what mitigation measures we've already implemented. What remediation that we're going to be implementing. And then a plan for periodic sampling, the law calls for every five years. So that, that's something that we'll be working with the board as well on our future action plan. When we do have that action plan together, we would bring it to the board for an opportunity for public comment to. Comment on that plan. And then it would be something that would, the board would need to take action on. And then, so our next steps, we're still waiting on the Derringer Heights testing. We haven't received that yet. But of course, as soon as we get those, we will be right on that as well. We are required to post the test results by fixture on our website. So we'll be working on that. Once we have Derringer Heights, we'll put everything on the website. Again, we'll bring that action plan to the board when we've had time to work on that with the Department of Health. And then. It's changing out all of those fixtures is not cheap as you may guess. So luckily, the Washington, Washington State has a lead in water remediation and mitigation grant. That will apply, apply for. So right now, we're just collecting all of the costs that we've had in. In both the model filling stations and replacing all the faucets and fountains. And then we'll be applying for that grant. Not guaranteed that we'll get any funding, but of course, we're going to pursue that though. And then I just wanted to give a big thank you to Scott Leifester and Ryan Bickler. I call them our maintenance superheroes every day of, of the year, but especially in this. They, they got right to work. And like I said, within one week, which I think is an amazing feat. That they got all this work done and really had, like pushed a lot of the other work aside that they are already slammed with. They are our maintenance superheroes. And I just really wanted to. Share that, how integral they were in getting all of that work done. Any questions?
You answered it right at the end because I was like, does Derringer Heights have superior waters? But it was at the end. So, but I was wondering that the entire time. I might go up there and fill up. Sneak out of a spigot.
And we'll report those.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
I kind of expected that we might see them last Friday.
Okay. But my question goes on related to Derringer Heights, just based upon what we've seen at Lake Taps and the North Taps Middle. Is there an opportunity to be proactive there? If there's anything that, you know. From what we've learned from the other schools that we might just want to cut those off if we consider doing that.
You know, it's really, it would be really hard because it's super random where, like in one school, we had a pot in the kitchen. Yeah, there wasn't necessarily a pattern. There was even within one classroom, a sink. That the faucet was below five parts per billion and the water fountain was like above. Well, it was definitely above fifteen per billion. So. And they're right, yeah, they're right. So there's really not necessarily any, anything that we'd feel comfortable with. Until we get the, the results and I would expect them to be sent to us anytime.
The other thing that it looks like, you know, we're required to have everything inspected every five years. Are we considering doing that a bit more frequently than happens?
Yeah, I think we need to look at what that, what, you know, with, I don't really know what it costs either for them to come and do. All of our school districts. So we need to, and that's part of the action plan too, that we would want to discuss as a district. And we want to make that investment more often than what the law requires. So that's, that's a conversation that you'll all be, but welcome to give your feedback and thoughts on as well as we develop that. Right, any other questions?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Right, now we will hear from Kelly Foley, Child Nutrition Manager. She will present an update to the board regarding the great things happening in our food services.
Hi, beautiful faces. So nice to see you guys in person. Once again, for school nutrition, a huge crowd. Just a couple of quick updates. Our free reduced rate has been locked in. And I do believe it'll be a couple percentiles higher this year, but still probably one of the lowest in the state. And the other update with that is we've now translated a lot of our. Materials that are going out into Ukrainian and Spanish as well. So that was something new this year that we've implemented to support the families that we serve a little bit more. And the next slide. Those were the general last days. At the end of last year, we had a plant-based grant and we were able to do some training with it. And so Danielle will talk about this in a minute when we did some more today. Just the pictures of everybody in action, their knife skills training, which was really nice. People from all the kitchens, you can mostly see Sandy Van Pauw right there. And just a lot of good skills that are helping improve the quality of the meals. And also introducing and processing more fresh and local foods. So we're excited about that. And we had Case Washington Day where the W S B A came, O S G I came, and it was amazing. We were able to make it. And somebody from the governor's office came and it was just to really celebrate local food, local purchasing, local procurement. And the students dressed as farmers or ranchers and we did have one carrot. And so the middle schoolers really got into it. It was nice. I thank Mr. Yubert for his help and support on that because it was crazy to have so many extra guests in the school and we had to adjust quite a bit. But we were able to do that and really just celebrate our district and our commitment to local food. At elementary schools, we involved them by doing a coloring contest. And then we hung up all of them around the school. So it was kind of decorated that way. It's really just fun and cool. So those are some of the coloring contests. Winners and then. There's, yeah, there's somebody in a picture.
I was Casey Washington.
Taking the salad bar.
I forgot to mention, we also did have some farmers come, which was really great. So we had Bendigo with lettuce. We had Culbin Ranch with the beef. And we had Four Elements Farm, the tomatoes and carrots. And we actually have a student at middle school. Whose parents own that farm. So it was really neat to build like that actual community bond. And support of one of the families in our district that we didn't even know. Well, I didn't, they were in the district and we were doing purchasing from them. So this is really cool. And that is the big root photo. And we are all facing the sun. So lots of closed eyes. But we went out to the garden and two of the students there actually harvested potatoes and showed what we're doing. There. And then previously harvested potatoes were part of the school meal. And then a huge shout out to Prichet and Ari for all of their help. And they have an advisory garden club. They, they get kids so interested in the garden and it's extended into the lunchroom. So we do, you know, process and use that food too. And it's always amazing. We have really smart kids, but sometimes they haven't thought about where their food's coming from. So it's really amazing to see that connects. And then also it makes us lunch ladies a lot cooler. They're like, wow, you know, seeing what it is. So it's been. Really, really neat. And we plan on getting more of that, the elementary schools as well. Now, something new that we're doing is I, yeah, this is Danielle. And she is getting her registered dietitian licensing. And so she's doing a rotation. And this six-week rotation is at Derringer School District. So I'm from Central Washington University. And she's going to let you know a few of the things that we're doing.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here. I actually went to the school district growing up. So this is very near and dear to my heart. Getting to see and hear all the things that you guys have been talking about, that I did when I was a wee little tot. It's just fun that you guys are still, you know, supporting those things. And I remember all those good, good memories. So it's fun to see. Yes, I'll be here for six weeks. So we've done a lot so far and plan on doing more. Which I'll talk about the first three things a little bit more in detail with the slides. But I also plan to conduct a food waste study. I haven't done it yet, but it's in the works. So I'm pretty excited about that. Food waste is kind of a big thing in my field and just trying to find ways to mitigate that. So yeah, we went on a farm tour. Kelly invited me to go and I was so excited because I've never done a farm tour before. So it was kind of cool to also remind myself where our food comes from. I feel like sometimes I get so focused on studying and everything that it's a nice reminder. Just really, really do that and remind myself of that. So. There's a picture. There's the farmer that we met with. So yeah, it was just really cool learning about all the different things that he's doing and I learned a lot. Got to see some vegetables I haven't seen grow. So it was cool.
One of the important things when we go do things like that is that we're looking at how are they cleaning? All of the food that we're going to be eating, if they're gap certified or follow similar procedures. This particular farm, everything was excellent. They work with Washington State University as an outreach. So, but we actually have to see the bins that were sterilized, that were clean and things like that. So it's kind of important when we're doing the smaller firms that they have those kind of procedures in place.
Yeah, I took it in the previous slide. I took a picture of their little setup of all the different things that they use. So that made us excited because, you know, food safety is important. So yeah, that was cool. So today, actually, we conducted a hummus wrap taste test. So that was fun and exciting. The hummus was a hit, I would say. It was about fifty fifty. The kids liked it or disliked it. A lot didn't like tomatoes, which I thought was interesting. Not a big tomato fan. So they were like, no.
Were they guarded fresh? You said, are they spoiled?
They spoiled, yes. Yeah, so that was cool just to be out in the, in the lunchroom with the kids and talking to them about it. So yeah, we're gonna do some more of that upcoming. So. Can you say something about the?
Did my kids eat the hummus?
I was surprised at how many kids would try it. And again, it's, you know, vegetarian and we don't have things all the time or they're not the most popular items. So it's nice to kind of give that exposure. And Mr. Yubert loved them, of course.
I remember Taffa Swerden, she's in.
And they were all Washington-based products that were used in them. And so I like it when we can do a meal like that. And then just very easy, the taps that they were in, they could give them the smiley face or the frown face that they liked or not. And I did walk away from it after pointing out, I was standing there. It was very neat to see, yeah, and just our recipe standardization takes quite a while. It's a little more complex. And maybe people think it was a good experience for Danielle to do that as well.
Yes, yeah, it was processed for sure. But it was cool. I got the parsley. I went and cut it from the school garden this morning. So I used the parsley from the school garden in there. So. That was, it was very cool. Yeah. But yeah, definitely the kids were like standing there. And I'm like, oh, we should probably go. They're like, can I, can I do my honest opinion there? But yeah, that was fun. And then Kelly also mentioned kind of trying to get the kids to eat more vegetables during breakfast time. So we kind of came up with this fun idea to do sun butter, sun butter and celery turkeys. So a couple of the kids tried them. You know, it's kind of hard to get kids to eat vegetables at seven AM. But I think that it was a fun idea and trying anything, right? To get them to eat more vegetables. So.
That's basically everything. I did want to talk about the plate waste study just a little bit because. A lot, school districts are also being required to weigh like food waste or hedges waste. Or any of that kind of material and then come up with a plan depending on how much waste we have per year. So this is something that's been upcoming. A lot of the schools on the I five corridor right now are, are getting. They're being checked or monitored. I don't know the correct word for it. So that's part of why we're doing this study, at least from the food department side. Um, so that's part of why we're doing this study, at least from the food department side, to see where we're at. Kind of come up with a plan, work with the other departments too, um, so that we can be compliant in that way too. So it's good all across board. Any questions?
I have a question. You had mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that um, that you're in the process of of in increasing the quality of food that's going to be served in the elementary schools. Do you have a timeline or a sense of kind of when, when you hope to achieve that or?
Yes, um, it's mostly gonna have to be on side dishes or when we can source some of the things from our kitchen out. Um, so it, it does take a lot more staff time. Um, and then also we have the challenge of trying to get kids to the lines quickly. So it can't be anything too complex. Um, so those are things we're working on this school year to have implemented. Uh, the garden stuff, it'll be in the spring.
Are you thinking like central kitchen type stuff or like making it at North Taps and then bringing it here, like the, the sides or?
Um, predominantly, yes, that if staffing time allows, they can process some things in the elementary too. But per, you know, a lot of the breakfast stuff, it's like a lot of pastry base and it has reduced sugar, but it's just still isn't it? Um, what we think it should be. So a good, you know, whole grains, home cooked at North Taps and then taken to the elementaries is probably the way that we'll have to keep that going at least for another year.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
Exciting.
I know, I thought that about you. Next, we have second read for several policies that include updates recommended by WASDA. We have ten oh five, twelve ten, sixteen thirty, eighteen ten, eighteen twenty, eighteen twenty one, twenty one seventy, thirty four twenty five, and five thousandths. These have been reviewed and discussed by the board, and this is an action item. Are there any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept policies one thousand five, twelve ten, sixteen thirty, eighteen ten, eighteen twenty, eighteen twenty one, twenty one seventy, thirty four twenty five, and five thousand.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Sunny. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Those policies will be updated within the next week. Next, we have a second, another second re- read for our student discipline, our thirty two forty one student discipline policy. It was also reviewed and discussed by the board. And this is an action item. Are there any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
I do have a question. I, I, I was, it may be I'm lost on this one, but I thought we were, were we gonna get some input from building leadership on, on this?
Yeah, so thank you for that. We did meet as a, an admin group and we did look at it. Um, we agreed that um, the, the policy is great. Some of our procedures, we're gonna need to make sure are aligned with this. So that will be our next step. But we do recommend adopting this.
Okay, very good.
All right, any more questions or discussion? Do you have a motion?
I move to adopt uh, policy thirty two forty one.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Good Scott. All right, all of those in favor, say aye. Motion carried. All, that will also be uh, updated within the week. All right. Next, we have a resolution. We have a resolution two twenty five twenty six levy recommendation to the board proposition one. Laura, Marco will present more information about this.
Again, this is really exciting to be able to bring this to you for um, potential action tonight. Um, we can go to the next slide. Um, seen this twice already tonight, but we're hammering this home community and united educational excellence. Um, and I wanted to bring that in specifically because these are all things that are either supported or not supported by our community. Um, and we're gonna just kind of give a little bit, a lot of this is gonna be overview again, um, or re- repeat. Um, but we have a current educational programs and operations levy and a capital slash tech levy that is expiring in calendar after calendar year twenty twenty six. We are recommending replacement levies for both of those for the next four years, which would cover twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty. The passage rate for levies is fifty percent of those who vote plus one. Um, which is different from a bond, which is sixty percent plus one. Levy funds are received over the entire year, four year period. Um, so we, you know, likewise, we need to manage the projects over that four year period if approved. Um, we are recommending a, the February election for a couple of different reasons. Um, that we, you could run two elections in a year. Um, so we ran in February and uh, were unsuccessful. We could run it again in April. And that would be um, extremely important for us to do, especially if the um, the educational programs and operations levy were to not be successful. Um, because we would need to make some serious tough decisions about our general fund budget. We need to cut probably about six point two million dollars. Um, and that doesn't give us a lot of time to do that, but that is because we're in the budget season at that time. Um, that's, uh, you know, we, we, we need to do all that work in a, in a hurry. Um, the, the, this next four year levy, um, combined, we are still proposing uh, but it would be at the same rate, a total rate of three dollars and twenty eight cents per thousand dollars in assessed value. Looking at the next slide, first talked about proposition one for our educational programs and operations levy. And that's um, the levy that is, is to enrich our general fund budget. Currently, it accounts for about twenty percent of the whole revenue for the general fund. And yeah, um, it's intended to provide enrichment to basic education. But in reality, it really provides critical funding for our daily operations. Half of that um, levy goes for unfunded and underfunded salaries, which allow us to be able to provide um, smaller class sizes, additional counselors and um, uh, health services staff. Um, educational programs, curriculum and materials, utilities and insurance. Um, and finally, our extracurricular sports and activities. Um, all, all things that are really integral to our daily operations. Um, over the next four years, this is um, the amount that we would propose each year. Um, there is a calculation by the state. Um, and at this last legislative session, they actually increased the capacity that we could collect as a district. Um, and these numbers would reflect based on what we know and, and assumptions on assessed value. Um, what our levy rates would be in order to fully collect what we could for the district. And it is a pretty significant more amounts, anywhere from about one point five to two million dollars more um, per month, and which would go a long way to helping our uh, financial stability. Cause that, if you remember, we cut about one point six million dollars from the twenty five, twenty six budget in order to make a balanced budget this year. So that rate would rise um, about thirty five cents to a dollar eighty five per a thousand dollars of assessed value. And as I said just a little bit ago, but we're still looking for the total rate overall to remain the same. So we'll talk a little bit about how that's gonna happen um, with this specific rate increasing in just a little bit.
Can I just clarify? It's one and a half to two million dollars more in a year to collect.
And on the next slide, we'll talk about proposition two for uh, our capital and technology levy, which is intended for major building and critical systems replacement and renovation and updates. Um, we have a really big safety and security update um, plan. Um, it also pays for our technology, equipment and infrastructure. And as I mentioned before, um, typically when things like the capital technology levy passes, you just wanna do all the projects the first year. Uh, just like our last levy where we had the HVAC system and the, the roof and then the turf field. We can't do all those all at the same time because we have to wait for that money to trickle in over those four years. So um, moving on to the next slide. Um, this is really, the capital and technology money is really about maintaining our investments. As we just talked about with our um, lead water testing, our buildings are aging and just like our own homes. There are things that need to be replaced and critical systems and equipment and um, things that just over time wear out. Um, we have just under two hundred thousand square feet of building space that need to be maintained. And so really, we want to be able to be in a part, in a point where we're being preventive and proactive rather than reactive with our um, building, major building maintenance. Um, we really want to ensure a safe and healthy environment for our students. Um, it, maintaining our buildings, maintaining our community's investment. Our community built those buildings and we, we have a responsibility to maintain them. Um, the longer we wait for things, you pay, you pay double in the end, that we, we don't address things now. When we know that we need to make some um, upgrades. Um, it supports our modern learning needs, especially with our technology. Um, our schools are a source of pride and they enhance our property values for our community. Um, and then um, finally, um, we, this, a lot of these projects would help us see um, and maintain compliance with the Clean Buildings Act that we've talked about at um, previous meetings as well. Um, I get asked a lot, well, doesn't the, the state fund this? And they don't, they don't fund school construction and they don't fund major maintenance and renovations. Uh, is um, unfortunately for Washington, that is something that falls on our community. The next slide. These are the amounts that we would levy over the four years. Um, for the capital levy, um, it would be a total of eighteen million dollars. And for the techno- technology levy, just under eight million dollars. And that section down below is what would be planned in those are all estimates at this point as well, but generally this is what would be planned at um, each of the separate locations. And we'll talk a little bit about specific projects here.
What's contingency other?
That is, um, we have built in a certain amount of contingency because uh, especially over a four year time period. Costs escalate. Uh, we may have something that is planned, you know, a lot of this the projects that are planned for the capital side of the levy were informed from our building condition assessment that we had McKinstry do. And while these projects, we said, okay, we're gonna take the first four years and most critical projects and do those. We could have a major, uh, a major system that is planned in year five or six that we think that will have to replace. That could fail. Um, and we need to have some money in order to maintain um, for, for, you know, eventualities that could happen. We experienced that this year with our Lake Tops um, power outage. Um, and that's, um, that's, we have some in there for just cost escalation and then things that we don't know um, are possibly going to, to happen. Good question. Um, next slide. I won't go through every um, specific project, but um, this is generally what we have planned in the, at all of our locations. We have a lot of plumbing replacements and electrical upgrades that we need to do. So that's on all of our locations. Also, the integrated fire life and safety system, as well as the upgraded security cameras and communications and intercom system that is all integrated. That's a huge piece of this um, levy. Um, we'd like to add rubber surfacing under the playground. It's, it's under the safety and security projects. Cause that is, it's not just about the um, intrusion, um, safety. It's about physical safety and preventing injuries, um, slips, trips and falls on playgrounds, on wood chips. Um, is not as, um, it's not as potentially um, damaging um, on, on those rubber, the rubber surfaces that, that we have available now. Um, this building needs a roof replacement. Um, and that would probably be one of the highest priorities, um, if this passes. Um, I know it very well, cause I have um, potential dripping right above my head, my, my office. So I knew right away, we had our newest leak. Um, we, we, we would like to update the rest of the lighting that wasn't done previously with LED. Uh, we have a lot of kitchen equipment uh, in our kitchens that need to be replaced. It haven't been replaced or touched since the buildings were built. Um, and uh, we need some uh, updates to our portable classrooms. Um, and then we'd like to uh, refurbish, you know, baseball fields, kind of re-saw and regrade um, our fields out there. Again, that's also what I would consider a safety project because that prevents trips and falls out of, out of the, on the fields. Um, at our next uh, Danger Heights. Um, again, we have same safety, security upgrades that are um, that are really excited about potentially doing um, rubber surfacing. We need some fencing around the playground as well. And then some other areas for safety. Um, it also needs a roof replacement, which is it's a, uh, in year twenty thirty is when the, our study said it was up, uh, up for. So we've made sure that we include that um, in this as well. This uh, capital levy, um, that building needs some painting, interior and exterior carpet throughout the building. And um, replacement of some select windows and doors, as well as the, the plumbing and electrical upgrades. Um, on the next slide for North Taps. North Taps really received a lot of love in the last levy. We have the, the roof that we already did. They have, they have the field and track and the portable. Um, and also HVAC um, equipment. But so there, there, they have a little bit less projects because there's some, already been some major projects done. Um, the last levy, but they really desperately need a lot of painting, replacing of their carpets. Um, updating their student bathrooms, a, a lot of plumbing and electrical um, upgrades. Uh, an irrigation system that is on its last legs out, um, out uh, in the fields. Um, we talked about this before, elk prevention fencing. Um, so we have an elk problem. And um, uh, just some, some other various things that need to be addressed throughout the building as well. And then our transportation, um, this is not as uh, visible as our buildings, because we don't have people going in and out of our, of our building. But our transportation area needs a lot of um, projects addressed. It needs a new roof as well. It needs to be painted. It needs, um, uh, we need to replace our fuel tanks down there. Fuel tanks are not something that we want to mess with and have those fail. Um, we need, uh, across the district, we would like to replace and rekey all of our core doors. Um, that's something that is a, a, a safety, security upgrade as well. Um, and uh, that, that building as well has some older electrical and plumbing needs that need to be addressed as well. So this is not just transportation, but transportation and some of the district wide um, projects, including, uh, we currently don't really have a budget for replacing staff and student furniture. We have especially at Derringer Heights, we have some desks that are conducive to the classrooms that we have. Um, and some of the furniture, lunch tables and things at um, North Taps are thirty years old, over tables, have never been replaced. So we have quite a bit of um, budget in there for addressing um, furniture replacement as well throughout the district. And then see, um, for the technology side of the levy, um, these are probably things that people are more um, I guess probably are more familiar with. Um, this pays for our student Chromebooks and staff computers. It's time that we look at our flat panel screens, see about replacing those with something more updated. Um, it pays for, um, we were going through a major conversion from our current software that we use on both the fiscal side and the student side. Um, and that's paying, that will be paying for training and some extra um, staff time. Um, we, we also have all of the infrastructure that runs all that technology that periodically needs to be replaced, like firewalls and servers and um, cybersecurity. Um, we have, that is where we have um, our instructional coaches and tech staff paid out of. And then also, um, we, a good portion of that each year pays for our digital curriculum and infrastructure, uh, digital tools. And then if we look at um, in both dollars and then in rates, um, the first red box there is um, the uh, what would be the capital and technology levy together. We're running that as proposition two together, not two separate. And then we have the E P and O, those are the amounts in thousands, um, that we would collect over the four years and then all the other. Um, that we would collect over the four years and then on the other side, that would be the individual rates per thousand dollars of assessed value. But looking at the total, again, that's the um, we can see now in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. We're still at about the same rate that we're collecting now and um uh projected to collect in twenty twenty-six. He's here, this is just to give you some historic um look at our tax rates going back to I think two thousand sixteen. So as you can see, we're at the lowest tax rate we've really been in probably a decade. Um, and so and that's really what we're trying to keep, is just a even tax rate, so we're not seeing these peaks and valleys in our in our tax rate for our. Um, for our county. Any questions on this?
I have got questions.
Okay.
Um, so I noticed on on the district-wide. Um, you said district-wide furniture, I know in the past, that's been on the principal building budget. Is that, are we are we changing that? How we're gonna do that, so it's no longer gonna be on the principal to say, okay, I need to save X amount of days or years, so I can get new. Tables in the cafeteria.
Good question, we would like their their building budget to be able to be spent on the. Um, the students that are there that year and not have to carve away things for five to ten years, I think. David's been saving for lunch tables for I don't know how many years.
I use that.
And say it's still, um, that's what we really, in in my opinion, not what a building budget is for, that's.
I agree.
Of the school and that, yeah.
Totally agree, and then the other thing, are we, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we still a server-based? Kind of world?
Yes.
Does this get us out of the server-based world?
Yeah, when when possible, I know that our IT department is going cloud as as much as possible.
Okay, so but but this this upcoming levy will not get us out of the server world.
Um, I would have to run that by Martha and Freddie, but I don't know that it would necessarily, I mean, I think when. We have the 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 fund would be avail- available and then we would say. What the best solution is for the money we have and what the needs of the district are at the time. I mean, I don't know if they're doing a lot of cloud printing and but not not every aspect.
Yeah.
Is available.
Yeah, I I just, I you know, I can remember when there's a power outage, then the whole operation shut down.
Yeah.
It isn't ideal, and I mean, I just, you know, when. Servers are kind of. Gang out of business, right?
Yeah.
And so I just hope.
Now they have a lot of virtual servers too.
Right, and I know something, I know a lot of the the platforms are virtual and. And in the cloud, I just know that that's the trend and especially once we're going to the voters saying, hey. We're we're on it.
Yeah, where where possible. Dark fiber as opposed to least lit.
Exactly.
That the next um the next board meeting will be bringing some. Um bids for um consideration of a purple as well, and there's um like a redundant internet as well. Yeah, in that package that we're looking at to make sure that we do have a Comcast outage that we, you know, we can still, our schools can still operate.
And then I noticed that there's some hard keying going on. Again, is the trend more not to be on a digital keys, I know that you had your consultant here, digital. Not physical key cards, but I mean, still having physical hard keys, and I know, you know, for fire and and all that, I know. There has to be some Knox boxes and things like that.
Yeah.
But i- is that the trend to go with with hard keys and not with with digital access?
Yeah.
Then, I mean, just the ease, the i- is your staff member, as a, you know, lake, here's your key card. You know, through through your phone to get into your your classroom, to your building, to your, you know, wherever.
Yeah. We'll never get away from the door core.
Yeah.
The master core.
Yeah.
Um, but as much as possible, you would like to, even um for uh. People renting our our buildings to get away from, not that we hand them keys, but to be able to make it easier for them.
Give them a temporary passcode to get in and then.
Yeah, that's all part of the.
Okay.
The system that we.
Awesome.
Look at, yeah.
Perfect.
Other new question? I know this is not the first time you're referring this, but just to for for those.
This is phenomenal presentation, I mean, the detail of the time that you guys have spent in this has been. It's been very informative, very easy to read and, um, I mean, I think, I agree with everything you're saying, if we we have these buildings, we we have to maintain them. Um, I mean, that's what we've been tasked to do and we need some dough to do it, right? So.
Yeah, 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 we unfortunately don't, we don't get that just out of our regular general fund.
Yeah.
All right, um, if we go to the next slide, um, there are two action items for you to consider. Um, and you'd have separate action taken on them, the first one is for the educational programs operations levy. And then the second one separately for the capital and technology.
One more question, when does the bond um come off the off the books?
We have the two thousand sixteen um non-noted debt, which was, I think, the late tax expansion.
Right.
And the two thousand seventeen bond, um, that was for uh North Tops and Derringer Heights. And renovations, and they're um uh like twenty thirty-four and twenty thirty-five, so they fall off, right now it's about sixteen cents. For a thousand dollars of assessed value.
What what about the the Greg Johnson Field and everything?
That was part of the levy that's expiring.
Okay, that's, so that's coming off, cause one is coming off, right?
Yep, that's a that's a four-year.
Right.
The cap- capital levies and the the major projects were the, the priority was to do the HVAC and the roof and North Tops first.
Right.
So now that's why we're addressing the.
Okay, so this is, that that's coming off, this is back in.
Yes, yeah, and this will this will be a replacement to that, so those those fall off and then this will be a replacement.
And the intent is to keep, so all right, it's fifth grade, when when do students get their Chromebooks?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, so then the student gets their Chromebook in fifth grade, and then that Chromebook stays with them through their their. Progress, through their career, and then in eighth grade, they buy it for.
Option to buy.
Ten dollars?
Option to buy.
Option to buy for twenty dollars or something. Five, yeah, my fourth grade is very excited to be the. Okay, and that's, we we would keep with that.
Yes, yeah, we um, we have a, so yeah, every four-year cycle um that we. But we have, we that we plan for.
Does that replace the Chromebooks then in the in the like kindergarten rooms and the in all the in all the classrooms, they just don't go home?
It's all part, right, yeah, that's all part of the replacement.
Okay, it's all part of that, okay, fair.
Yeah, which I can, like, at some point I can show you the replacement cycle as well, it's all.
No, just one, just uh make sure we're still doing that, cause I think that is so intentional and very. Just a, just a huge success for our our young learners, so it's awesome.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Alright.
All right, do we have a motion to approve resolution two twenty-five twenty-six?
To approve motion twenty-five twenty-six. Second.
All right, thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. And then next is, uh, do we have a motion to approve resolution three twenty-five twenty-six levy recommendation? Proposition two.
I I move to approve resolution three twenty-five twenty-six.
Thank you, and we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, all right.
Then hello, we have the four against committee.
Okay, great, you're still on that, wonderful, thanks, Laura.
We have all of the verbiage here.
Yes.
So one of the the things that we are required to do when we run a levy and for each proposition is we need to appoint a committee. That advocates for the levy and also, yes, you could say advocates against the the levy as well.
We appoint the against?
Yes, well, um, what we do is, so if we go to go to the next slide. What we do is we um on our website for the week, November twelfth through the nineteenth. We advertise for anybody who would be interested in joining either of those committees, could go to the website and fill out a form. And um so we, after that closed, we looked at all of the the people that um. Put their information down, we ended up not having anybody um sign up for the against committee. And we had three people sign up for both the EP and O levy and the capital and technology levy. Um, and we can go to the next, the next slide might just be easier. Um, these are the people that signed up for the four committee, Greg Garrison, Kim Hughes and Desiree Brown. Um, all three of them signed up for both. Um, and this is um would be an action item to appoint these committees. And then what happens from there, we um when we file with the county by December twelfth, the resolution that you just approved. We also send the committee um a action form um with these people's names. Um, as well to the county, and then um we also provide them with all of the materials on. Um, what they need to do for getting their statements into the voter's um pamphlet, and then they'll appear in the voter's pamphlet, and then. There's no against committee, but the county could still, um, they could advertise and get somebody. Um, through the through the county as well, so it's um, it's not a for sure thing that we don't have any against committee. Cause that that has been known to happen as well, but um at least through our process, nobody signed up. Um, and so this is, this is an action item as well.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have any other questions on the four or against? Okay.
Just a super quick question, um, is it common for the same volunteers dissipating in EP and O?
Yes, yeah, at least in my experience, I have seen that.
Right. Do we have a motion? To approve the levy for and against committees?
I move to um approve the for and against committees.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You standing up for the next one?
It's the surplus list.
This is just a lot of the serial numbers, but they're all wireless access points that were replaced. And that funding was provided through the previous technology levy, so um the, yeah, it's a, it's a lot of it, I don't know that. Uh, the serial numbers um are important, but this, this is the list of all we need for access points, so. Um, they have little to no value, they'll be recycled um through our technology recycler. Um, they wouldn't be able, it's not something that we would be able to resell and we isn't get any funding from.
All right. Do we have any questions, Laura? All right.
This this might be an odd question, but is is, what's the reason that the board needs to? Approve this particular, isn't this as part of standard operation?
It's required, yeah, it's because of. Well, the law that school boards have to, um, yeah.
It's a policy, right?
Yeah.
Because we've used public funds to purchase those items, we need to uh approve that we are. Um, surplusing them to not be used anymore in the district.
Thanks for your question. All right, uh, do we have a motion to approve the surplus recycle list?
I I move that we. What is this? I know what it is, but I. Getting rid of the. Wireless joints. I move that we do that.
Do we have a second that would do that?
I will say.
Thank you, all right, uh, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next up?
Okay, stay right up here. Okay, so these are, I have two um financial reports for you tonight, the year end, even though it's November and it seems like. The our fiscal year ends August thirty-first, it's like a long time, um, we actually just finished doing all of the year-end. Um, activities and filing with OSPI on October twenty-fifth um for for last year. So this is just kind of a summary of where we ended up. Um, this is a comparison of what we budgeted for enrollment last year compared to our actual. Um, the budgeted enrollment was actually determined before I got here, so I I can't tell you where the, you know, what the. Thought process goes behind it, but um we did end up having a hundred and seven FTE, student FTE. More than what was projected, which um was uh was very helpful, uh one point two million dollars. Again, I hate to talk about children in a dollar, but value, but we've built a budget based on what how many students we think we're we're getting. And so that really was a big um help to our um financial budget, having those additional students over the projections, so. Um, and then off to the left, that's um totaled by uh by school, what the um enrollment was. And let's look at the general fund first, um if we add up all of our salaries and benefits paid for our certificate and classified stuff. Eighty-three percent of our total expenditures, so we are definitely a people business, so everything else, gas for the buses, food for. Um, uh, for child nutrition program, all of our curriculum, all of that was only seventeen percent of our total budget. Um, and as we talked about earlier, of earlier about what our um educational programs and operations levy pays for. Um, I think I mentioned about half of it goes to underfunded or unfunded salaries, so um that first box there. Um, we received about thirteen point one million dollars from the state to fund salaries and benefits. What it actually takes to run the district and pay people at the um at the going wage, competitive wage. Uh, was sixteen point one million dollars, so yeah, about three million dollars um is unfunded from the state for that. And this is um just a but a comparison of our original budget to our actual, um. Obviously, we took in more revenue and largely related to the additional students um that we received. Um, and uh we did have some savings throughout the year and unspent salaries that we had budgeted for people leave. And we may have of, you know, no replacement for a little for a little while, um but also, we were very, very. Purposeful in, um, I think for the first time in many years in this district, having. Uh, department budgets and everybody understanding what their budgets were and some sort of thought process behind those budgets and. Um, we met regularly with um between principals and um like health fully and child nutrition and. Um, down transportation and amongst the the district office to make sure that we were in uh in line with what we had budgeted. And not, I mean, not, I can't say that we've spent or previously, well, um. Really, really, that's not the word I should use there, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying that we had previously, I'm just saying. Over the last year, we've really been careful and if it didn't need to be spent, we didn't spend it, we were really trying to put the brakes on. Um, and stop stop releasing, cause like that's, I think, as I shared with you, the last three years, we had spent down the fund balance by about eight hundred thousand dollars. After the year, so um all all that was very intentional. I'm going to the next slide. Um, so we ended the year at four point four million dollars in our general fund. And that is made up of certain different reservations. Um, one area is what is determined non-spendable, and what that is, is we have. Um, inventory in our food service department and we also prepay for items in twenty-four, twenty-five that were for twenty-five, twenty-six. So you have to hold that in your um in your fund balance um as a reservation, um because those things aren't realized until the next year. Um, in our restricted fund balance, um, it's very much like it's saying, those are funds that are restricted for a specific purpose. In this case, about eighty-three thousand dollars is mostly made up of our unspent state CTE funding. Uh, it's in that category because it's not like we can take that CTE funding and use it elsewhere throughout the district, it has to be carried over and used in the CTE program. The next year, um and then also the uh remaining um lease on our copiers and mail machine as part of that number as well.
But we don't lose the CTE, but.
No, we don't, well, you have a a specific amount you have to spend, and if you don't spend a certain threshold, then. The the state takes it back essentially, but we did spend the threshold we needed to, plus we had a little extra that we.
Are we still that little extra we can?
Yes, yes, yeah, and we use it on the in the next year. Um, uh, for the assigned fund balance, that is uh our buildings and some other carryover. Um, a lot of that is, you know, for future curriculum purchases, lunch tables, things that have been, you know, our principals have been saving. Um, for, um, and that's, as we talked, we'd like to get to a point where we have a a separate fund for those kinds of things, like furniture and things that. So they can spend their budgets on the students that are there that year. Um, and in the unassigned first category, that's minimum fund balance policy, we have a. A board policy that says we have to maintain eight to ten percent of our um. a board policy that says we have to maintain eight to ten percent of our, um, of our total fund balance. Uh, that amount actually represents ten percent, we were able to hit the ten percent, um, and, um, the, the, the rest there is just unassigned, doesn't fit into any other category, so that's, you know, that's not a, it's not a ton left over there, but at least there's at least there's some still in there. Um, and then we come to the next slide. This is how we did spend our E P N O levy, um, uh, about one point four million dollars was spent on, uh, special education that was not funded by the state. Um, we saw that number down below, two point nine million dollars was underfunded and unfunded, salaries and benefits for our staff. Um, instructional, uh, supplies and services, one point three million dollars, and then all of our extracurricular athletics and activities is about three hundred fifty thousand. And then looking at all of our other funds, um, starting with the A S B fund, they ended the year at the two thousand dollars. Um, I think they built in a little bit more expenditure capacity than they ended up using, but that's, that's fine, um, and then going down to the next, um, fund. We ended the year higher in transportation vehicle than we thought we were going to, because we've had one ninety-passenger bus on order since August twenty-twenty-four. We were supposed to get it in August, and then it was going to be delivered in October, it's still delayed, and we don't have an updated delivery date for it yet, but, um, we're thinking anytime we should be receiving that bus. In the capital projects fund, we ended the year at seven point one million dollars, um, six point, almost six point five million dollars in expenditures, and the biggest projects, um, that we paid for last year was three point seven million dollars towards our HVAC project. Um, paid fully for our roof at North Taps. Um, the, the initial design phase for our turf field came out of there. Um, North Taps portable, it was just kind of the initial like permits and certain things that we, that, that's not the amount of the portable. Um, that project should be fully spent in twenty-five, twenty-six as well. We had the Lake Taps power outage, um, some other, you know, facilities, projects, um, and then one point six million dollars was, uh, are related to our technology levy. Sorry, next slide. And this is what makes up the reserve for the capital projects fund. Um, you have multiple different sources of funds in the capital projects fund, we have the levy, um, we have impact fees that when people go to build houses in our area, they they have a impact fee that they pay to the district, um, to help us with growth projects due to those additional students. Um, so we, we're required to keep all those things separated, so at the end of the year, we have about one point, um, almost one point two million dollars related to the technology levy, three point seven million dollars in the, um, the capital levy, most of that will go towards the field, um, the north, North Taps track and field for next year. Um, we have, uh, one point two million dollars that was committed by the board of just this past February to maintain for, um, either future land purchases and or, um, some, some facility upgrades if needed, um, and we made a purposeful, uh, the, the board made a purposeful, um, amount of decision to keep that in a, in a committed fund balance, so that didn't get absorbed and spent on other projects, um, so at at some point in the future, if we, if and when we want to use that, then we'll have to come back to the board for that decision. Um, we have, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars in impact fees that is going to pay for our new portable at North Taps. Um, not all of that, we'll be, we'll go toward that, but that's some of the, um, how the, that money will be used, and then we just, we have a little of extra, little about ninety-three thousand dollars that's available for all the projects that we want to stand on. That will, that wouldn't go very far, but, um, so that's the capital projects fund.
Answer your question?
Yeah.
On the, um, on the growth one, the, the one point two million for future land purchase, does that include the, the funds from when we sold over and off of, uh, Forest Canyon?
Yeah, April two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, does that include?
Yes, yeah, and then all of the, um, interest that it has accumulated.
So we sold that for like eighteen hundred, it were fifteen, eight, eight hundred K, right?
Something.
Yeah, okay, so we've made, made some decent.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Part of can interest, I like where you guys bank.
Next slide, I think is our last, um, debt service fund, and this is the fund that pays for our two thousand sixteen non-voted debt, and also our, um, our two thousand seventeen bond, that was the, just talked about that a little bit ago, the North Taps and Derringer Heights, uh, expansions. Um, uh, and, and again, we, we'll, we'll have, um, those payments up through twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five. And that's twenty-four, twenty-five school year slash fiscal year, any questions about, any of that data? Lots of numbers, I know. And it's hard at whatever time it is, seven, three, one. Alright. Okay, now we'll look at September. I promise I will go away. So it's, we have, um, uh, because we've been working on uh, finishing all the, the fiscal year for twenty-four, twenty-five, we haven't been able to present September either, so this is kind of a little bit of a catch-up, you have question?
Yeah, the, the slide, this is September twenty-four, that it's supposed to be September twenty-five, right?
Uh, wait, let's see. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, pretend that's. So let's see, uh, while September enrollment was down from the previous year overall, um, we actually got about sixteen more students than what our projection was, so we are still, you know, it's it's down overall, but more than what we built our budget on, so that's, we can expect about another hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in revenue related to those additional students, um, for the months of September through December, the state pays us off of our, what our budget says, and then January, they true everything up and start paying us off of our actual enrollment. Obviously, um, enrollment is the largest driver of our funding, so, um, that's not as big of a deal this year as it was last year, when we had a hundred and seven students more, there was a, we, it, it took us, you know, several months to start seeing that, that revenue come in for those additional students, but um, that doesn't make as much of a difference this year, um, and then, uh, we are still, now that we've got last year finalized, we're still working to do all of the fall budget adjustments and bring our budget up to actuals based on the number of students, the um, amounts of grants that we received, a lot of, a lot of the things and the decisions and budgets that we make in the, in the spring, um, uh, is long before we have, um, actual information from either the feds or O S P I for a lot of the, a lot of the, the grants and different funding streams that we have, so it takes us a little bit of time in the fall to, um, adjust everything to actual. And then this is our five-year enrollment trend, kind of hidden, um, behind that orange line there is so far this year, so you can see where um, you know, we've come a long way since losing a lot of students through COVID, we gained, you know, some, some students each year, um, but we're, we're really close so far for the first three months of this school year, um, really, really tracking close to last year. Um, other than that, September is not, you know, super, there's not a lot going, going on, so not a lot to, um, share, is there any questions on September? Alright. And I think, I think that's. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks for helping us make sense of all of this, yes, yes, you do a fantastic job of that. Okay. Next up is public comment, did we have anybody signing? So, okay.
There we go.
Alright.
Not sure what I'm sharing.
So the next is board comments. Would anybody like to share anything? Alright, well, I would like to say something, I appreciate the opportunity that we were given to be able to attend W A S D A as a board. Um, as some of you might know, we are, well, we're, we're doing the work to think about rewriting our strategic plan, and I know personally, and I think many of us took away a lot of information about, um, that will aid us as we write a truly meaningful strategic plan. And, um, and I took away quite a bit that I will, uh, that we look forward to sharing and actually having our own little study session regarding our findings, and because we do like to divide and conquer, we try not to take repeated sessions so that we can all attend as much as possible, and then come together and share our learnings and findings, and, um, I'm really thankful for that opportunity, and I would say that W A S D A sessions were even more fruitful than before, and I'm really excited to come together and share, um, our findings from that weekend. Thank you for that opportunity, and to Ryan and Scott, I, it's, it's, there's so many people and Julie that do, are doing the work behind the scenes, and that just, that speaks volume to how, volumes on how dedicated of staff they really are, and that I, I don't think anybody said, we need to have this done, and they just did it, and that's what's really neat about our guys and Scott and Ryan, and so I just wanted to continue and add to that thanks that you shared this evening.
I'll say that it was a, a, you know, tremendous opportunity, and I mean, a couple of key takeaways for me was, um, we don't get redos, we, we gotta get this right, and so when we, when we do our strategic plan, we need to, we need to, to take the effort and, and get it right, and um, me personally, I learned a lot of things, and what, some of the things I learned is, I need to relearn some things. Some things that I've learned before, I need to relearn because things are changing. So, I'm excited for that, it was awesome being with you guys, and, yeah, go Derringer.
Yeah. Alright, alright, well, the time is now seven forty-one, and the meeting is adjourned.